Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The public is invited to join the remote public sessions on Zoom. We'll start with a roll call of school committee members. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yeah.
Jennifer?
Yep.
Nick?
Here.
John?
I'm here.
Brooke?
Yep.
And me, thank you. I'll just read the whole disclaimer here next. Per Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. The extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into laws, Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as it is practical to do so. Any members of the public who wish to join this meeting may do so by accessing the link on the Gill-Monague Regional School District website. It can be found under School Committee Notices and Agendas for Upcoming Meetings and it's tonight's date. We are recording the meeting and that recording will be available on our Gill-Monague Regional School. My back? Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay.
Ask a question though. For this meeting, people can't join actually, right? The public?
They can zoom into the audience.
Okay.
We, yeah, we are, we're not broadcasting at this time.
I misunderstood. Thank you.
Live streaming, right? Because it's not a regular meeting, but thank you for asking. Yeah. And our only item of business is reviewing the preliminary fiscal year 24 budget. So I know we have Joanne and Brian and Diane in case we have questions about things. Joanne, just let us know the best way you'd like to do this.
Okay, I can put this up on the screen or we can just talk about it. Each. Why don't I put it on the screen and just explain a couple of things first? I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, so when you're looking at your paper copy or at the screen, we're gonna talk about the numbers down the far left-hand corner. So if I'm talking about the very first line with money, the treasurer's salary, I'm gonna say line seven, which would be all the way to the left. And then we would be talking about row R, which is up at the top. What I did in this column and from R to V, really, the green, the darker green highlights, those are all salaries. And the reason those are in there is because, highlighted as green, is because those are links to another page on the salary sheet. And so that's just a way for me to be able to keep those links. So I'm not, you know, if I'm sharing this without the formulas, I don't take those formulas out of my own. So those are links. The light green that you can see in row 16. It's in the change column and in the descriptions, the notes, that is a decrease of some sort, you know, a significant dollar amount. And then the light yellow is an increase of a significant amount. So does, does everybody want me to keep my screen up or do you want to see faces?
Whatever people prefer. Any thoughts about that?
I have no feelings about that.
Okay.
Me either. I'm gonna be using the sheets.
Yeah, I don't.
Why don't I take this down then?
I just have one request and Jean, that is, as we, when we go to lines that contain salaries, can you indicate which bargaining unit those salaries would be assigned to, whether it's A, C, D, or something else?
Yeah, for the most part, yeah. I think that that should be doable.
Okay, thank you.
Joanne, maybe just a thought, since Mike Jackson is joining us in the audience, would it make it better for him to have it on the screen or would he have a copy? Mike?
Hi. Don't, don't work anything around me. I've got a PDF popped up and that's just fine.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure that you had access to the information. Thanks, Mike. So I guess we're good.
Okay. All right. So I'll just go down these, you know, I tried to highlight those main changes, the significant changes, that way you could see that where those lines are. And I tried to do the research on each of those to make sure that I had some answers for you. So the first one, Superintendent Other Expenses, that is the new Superintendent Induction Program that is completed at the end of this year. And so we saved the funds that we're paying for Brian's participation in that.
And would you, Joanne, would you people, if they come up with a question, to just interject it where you are or wait till the bottom of the page, what's easiest?
You can interject where we are. I think that'll work. Unless it gets too out of control, then we can.
Yeah, if people are unruly, we'll change the rules.
Right. Reconsider. Okay. The next line, 23, that's an increase in the business office clerical salaries and that was some staffing placement changes. John, this is partially Unit C and partially individual contract. Um. Sorry, so what does that mean, staff placement changes? So we had a staff member that went from a Unit C admin assistant line to a data line. And then we also had with frontline, our software company that we use for for our hiring, our absences, all of that. And even for IEPs, our eSped program, all of that, the staff that go into that need to be managed. So it's a. If I wanted to see, if I wanted to see the individual line items, like how would I do that? We, we wouldn't share with you the salary that go into that. That's two people. So is 12%? I know there's been issues, right, with the, you know, I don't know what I can say, actually. So just say like 12% seems like a lot. So I wonder if that will, you know, I just would love more information about. Yep. If you look at a salary, a Unit C salary schedule, you would see that the admin assistant has a pay rate and then the data column, data technicians. I just got this today. I don't, I mean, maybe I missed some email or something, but this is, I got the physical copy today, so I have not spent a lot of time on it. When you say the schedule, where's that? Is it on this printout somewhere? No, it's on, online on our website. Okay, all right. And Unit C, if you're in the Unit C negotiations, you would have a copy of that. So that particular unit, you can see where unit, the difference in Unit A and the technology salary schedules, right? And so when we took somebody and moved them from one unit to the other, that line's gonna be affected. Okay. And then the absence management and the frontline data managing. When we eliminated our substitute caller, the person that actually calls and schedules the subs, we saved some money from that. We paid it toward frontline, but then frontline wasn't being managed. So we really needed to manage that database. And so we're paying a stipend for that. The next line is software. And so I'm just gonna go into my actual budget. So if you, when we pull together like this, well, give me a list of all of her software. For instruction and all of her software for admin. And so the administrative software costs are going up and a part of that is our financial data software. So the software that we use to manage our budget. And the cost of that, she has a pretty significant increase. And then she also had an increase in there's a small increase in a lot of softwares, but there's about 20 different software systems that we use. And these aren't, they're administrative, but they're not only used like in the central office. They're used by teachers, but for administrative purposes.
John?
Yeah, so is that, oh, hold on.
No, you were, you were unmuted.
So, so is that what teachers use for attendance and?
Let's see. Yep. Backup software that we use for our internet or our, not our internet, but our computers. Tina's not here. She's the one person that's not here. So the backup software for our servers, QuickBooks, which our schools use for their student activity programs, our domain name, our website hosting, frontline, absence management, IEP software, and central solution, which is our hiring forms. Filtering software for Google Domain, point-of-sale software for our lunch program, school spring for job search and advertising, SNAP, which is our healthcare software, Admin Plus, Reddicker, where we manage our student data, Soft Choice, which is for our servers and office suites, our software for that, virus protection software, financial management software, teacher evaluation software, video conferencing, Zoom, what we use right now, the Privacy Alliance. And that's it. So those are the softwares that are in that that account.
Yeah. So the student management, how, what software do the teachers use to keep track of grades and attendance? Is, is that this part of the student?
Is that Reddicker, Brian?
That's Reddicker, yeah.
Yeah, it's Reddicker. There's a subfield of Reddicker called Plus Portals.
Right. But that is in this section, because it's an administrative thing. We're not using it to teach the kids. We're using it to track data. So some of those increased, which led to that $13,000 increase. Then line 45 is pupil services salaries. So that line, we used to have 2.2 admin assistants in the bit, in the special ed office. And we weren't unable to fill one of the positions. And so it's been vacant for a very long time. And so last year, we cut it out of the budget. But we were able to fill a part of that position with a part-time person. So we're bringing this up a little bit. It's, I think that the part-time person works about 15 hours a week. So that's what's in here for the budget, is the addition of that position back into the budget. Now still, we could increase this to the extra full-time person, but we haven't done that yet.
And is that person Unit C?
That would be Unit C.
Okay, pupil services, okay. How about the Superintendent Secretary? Is that Unit C or is that non-unionized?
Yeah, there's, so my assistant, as well as Joanne's assistant, who are, the four of us are the confidential personnel in the district. We're all non-union.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, as are directors and principals.
I see. So the Director of Pupil Services is not?
Not union.
Union, okay, thank you.
Yep, managers, supervisors, like the food service director, the facilities director, those positions are not unionized either.
I think the list, there is a list in the orientation book, but I was having a little bit of a hard time lining up those job descriptions with some of the line items here. But maybe I can ask Jane about that later on or somebody after me, because I don't want to waste time on that.
Sure, that'd be fine.
Okay, just gonna continue down. Line 70, online textbooks, that we just broke out into the schools. And some of that we'll find in our software as well, the instructional software, some of them we might find in there. Teacher mentor stipends. This year, there appears to be an increased need. And so we're increasing that budget for next year. The majority of that is in our Title II grants, but we are increasing, been putting a budget into the general fund as well, because this year we are having to use some general fund in spite of not having a budget for that. John, did you have another question?
Yeah, so what is medical therapeutic points on, on 73?
Oh, sorry. 73. Okay, so we'll move on to page two. So medical therapeutic teachers. So let me just give you an idea of how these work when you see the salaries. So over in column F, in column F, you see 114. And so anything that starts with a one in that column, the 100s, are professional salaries. And so if they are in a union, they would be Unit A, if they start with a one. So medical therapeutic salaries would be anything that would be Medicaid-related, OTPT speech. Can't think of any more right now. But those are, those are the big ones. The bilingual, line 78, bilingual para. Right now, we have a para that is bilingual para parent liaison that is charged to Hillcrest. They had initially, they had been based at Hillcrest, and so that's what the budget has been. So it's an increase here, but if we go to line 329, if you want to flip there, you'll see that that line is decreasing by about the same amount. So that's not really an increase.
And that would be a Unit C, is that correct?
That is Unit C, right. And if you look back over in column F, you see that that account number starts with a three. So threes are support staff.
And that would be Unit C, then?
Could be Unit, this one is Unit C, yes. But support staff might also be cafeteria, or they might also be custodians.
Okay.
The summer program, we have stipends in here for the summer program and some stipends in here for tutors. So line 79, there, there's a bunch of summer program accounts that you're gonna find. And this is, this is the first one. And so we're basing the budget on what we spent last year for the expanded summer program. So this is an increase in that summer program for that line. We have three years in the ESSR grants that we can fund with the, we can fund the summer program with these ESSR grants. So this is gonna be the second time that we're funding this larger program, that we're gonna have one more funding of this program in fiscal '25's budget. So I took the balances for those lines, split it in half, and adjusted it based on how we had spent last year. And then the tutors, I decreased tutors that are in all the individual schools and put them in one single line for district-wide. So we have more ability to track those numbers and spend them. Sometimes the lines, you know, there'll be a tutor line in a school and we're still spending it from district-wide, because people aren't always aware that they have a tutor line also. So instead of having five tutor lines, we're just gonna have the one tutor line. PD Consultants District, that was ESSR funding that we had, and so we will not be having as much ESSR funds supporting PD consultants. So bringing a consultant into the district for professional development. We hadn't been spending that much from the ESSR grant, and so we've, we're bringing that number down.
So is that typical of consultant spending for professional development?
It's high, because it was ESSR spending.
Can I just point out that this is one of the reasons in this budget that tells me that Massachusetts is the promised land in public education in the United States? I know that's hard for you to believe, but in my old school district, we had $40 million out of our $450 million in expenditures that went to line 5800, which was consultants and other things as well. But this is one, there's another reason why Massachusetts is, to me, the promised land, even though I know you have a hard time with that, but it is.
Some side information, since we're talking about it, since I work with a consulting company, I know I work with schools that regularly spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on just consultants. So we're doing good.
So the PD Supplies is an increase. Jean, if you're available, this was a line that you had increased in your budget requests?
Sure. So I specifically increased this line for, one of the things that we've been doing with our professional development is, at the elementary level, we've had some kind of grassroots work, professional development-wise. We have some teachers who are taking some leads. And so they are developing professional development for their colleagues in certain areas. And so we tend to need more supplies, books, specifically for our book study as well. We're supporting the staff by purchasing those. So with having more kind of made-at-home professional development with some of the teachers who are experts in our district, we need some additional supplies in that line.
Okay. And then the next two lines are decreases, PD Travel and PD Consultants for Special Ed, and that again is a reduction from the ESSR grant. But then PD stipends were increasing for the things that Jean just described. That's line 93. Line 94 is a decrease in our textbooks for district-wide. We had increased it in fiscal '23 for the purpose of expanding our science curriculum. And so in fiscal '24, that number's just going back down. Line 96 is a reduction in district-wide instructional supplies. It's a reduction of the pandemic needs and the pandemic funding. And then line 99 is an increase in the Chromebooks. So there is still some ESSR funding that we're spending on the Chromebooks. And so this number will expect to see this go down next year when the ESSR funding is gone. But we're trying to get ahead of our technology plan, our technology purchases. Instructional hardware. Line 100 is a reduction in our purchases, because we did get ahead with the ESSR funding. And so now without the ESSR funding, we're having to reduce that line. Instructional software, I can go through those softwares with you. These are instructional softwares that we have on the list from Tina, which include Discovery, which is an online video, MediaFlex. I'm not sure exactly what that is, Opals. Learning Without Tears, the keyboarding site license. Online accessibility text-to-speech applications, writing accessibility applications, online library management. Couple of things for that, kindergarten assessment tool. Scholastics, oh no, scholastics is not there this year. Google Workshop license, Enterprise Google Workshop, iReady for reading and math assessments. Online interactive lesson building tools, curriculum mapping software, math apps, science online curriculum, symbol sticks, and Adobe Creative Suite. So that is a smaller increase than the administrative. Line 104 is a psychologist salary. So we have been unable to fill our psychologist positions. And we've been hiring consultants for those positions. So we are building the position into the budget. Instead of building in consultants for that, we're building in the salary.
And how many positions would that be? Would that be?
That is one. We have another one in the high school that we'll see. It's another psychologist position.
And that would be, that would be under the Turner Falls High School.
Yes, I believe that's where it is. Yep. Line 118 is our retirement assessment. So each October, we send our staffing of people that are in our town retirement system to the town retirement board. And they do a calculation based on all of their people in the retirement board to determine what everyone's assessment rate will be. So we get that assessment rate back in time to build the budget. And so our assessment did go up again. And then we also, from our grants, ESSR and Title I and Special Ed and Early Childhood Grants, when we have staff that are paid from federal funds, and those would all be federal funds, we pay a 9% retirement for those salaries. So that's what is happening over there in columns U and V in that line. Line 123 is the money that we have set aside for negotiable increases.
Sorry, I didn't get unmuted quick enough. That retirement assessment is not for Unit A, though.
Well, the retire, the town retirement assessment in column R is not for Unit A. That would be for all non-Mass teachers' retirement employees.
Okay.
Anybody that's in town retirement. And then column U and V in that row, those are Mass teachers' retirement, retirement assessments.
Oh, the grant-funded positions.
Right, for those federally funded grant positions.
I just want to be sure I understood that.
But those, those retirement amounts, we're paying based on 9% of salaries. And the retirement assessment that we paid to the town retirement system is closer to 28%.
Oh.
Because they're, they're funding the OPEP, right, the OPEP, which is the post-employment benefits. They're funding that. And so the retirement is about 28% the assessment. And it's like that in other retirement programs as well. The Franklin County Retirement, which is basically everything but Greenfield and Montague. Their retirement assessments were about the same amount, in the 25 to 28% range. So they're all pretty similar. Line 123, the negotiable increases, that is for Unit A and Unit C in that, and individual contracts. For Unit A and C, this is their second year of no contract, as we built the fiscal '24 budget. So this would cover, we have money in fiscal '23 to cover their fiscal '23 increase. But when we budget their salaries in the fiscal '24 budget, we're still using the fiscal '22 wage scale. So this negotiable increases line would include a raise to get them to the fiscal '23 wage scale and then to get them to the '24 wage scale. So if we were able to settle Unit A, then this number would decline and all of the salary lines up above would increase. And this would only hold Unit C. But until we have a unit settled, I keep the money here altogether in one line. Our other insurances, line 124 and line 128, those numbers are going down a little bit based on our claims history. based on our claims history. I'm gonna move to page three. John?
Yeah, I really have a question again, uh, relating to one twenty three. And does that number represent currently the maximum amount of increases we would be able to negotiate for the total of units A, C, and the non-contractual people?
It's a number that we put in there as a something to hold for the budget. So it's you know, based on, on some discussions that we've had, some what we think fiscal twenty three is gonna be, what we think fiscal twenty four is gonna be. And then the potential for like some added positions, if we're able to you know, if like positions change, there's some flexibility in that line. If somebody leaves before the fiscal twenty four budget is approved, but their, their salary is still in here, we're able to hire someone for less expensive. You know, there's a lot of salary changes, so that number is what I have set aside for salary increases for all of those positions. And it could also include salary changes for custodial, because maybe we hired somebody, somebody left and we hired somebody that was more expensive. So but primarily it's unit A, unit C, and individual contract increases for what we have not yet finished negotiating. On line one twenty nine on page three, that's the unemployment cost, and so that's also gone down. Our, our rate is lower because we have not had a lot of use. Like one thirty two, FICA Med, it's really a hard number to, you know, I, I can calculate one point four or five percent, but who knows what that's based on. Right? It could be based on all the stipends that we pay and all the extra stipends that we've had. So that number's gone up recently, and so I'm bringing the budget up to line up better with what our historical costs have been. Student accident insurance, we haven't had the climbing wall at Gill in a couple of years since, um, the person with the certification for climbing is not working there anymore. So we're removing that from the budget. Line one thirty four, health insurance, I've budgeted a five percent increase. And then I'm assuming a few extra staff. And it doesn't mean we have six new people that we're hiring, but we may have some individuals that did not pick up the insurance and may change their mind to pick up the insurance at a later date. So or, or they could be people that get married, or you know, they just, they, they age out of being on their parents' insurance plans. A lot of different things. So I always try to budget a handful of additional people and then an increase. So GIC will come out with an increase on what our actual increase is in about April. I believe it's April. And open enrollment happens after that. And so by June, we should know what changes there are. But by June, and even by April, we're long after the time of being able to adjust this budget for town meeting. So five percent is what I'm working with. You know, if we need to look at this budget, we need to try to make some changes and we need to make a reduction, maybe we could go back and look in adjusted by one percent. But I wouldn't budget less than four percent increase for that, but that's one of our numbers that we can be a little bit flexible with. And every time I pull the one percent out, really doesn't add up to that much. So it doesn't, it feels like it should, but it really doesn't, so. And line one forty is retiree health insurance. So I also assumed the five percent increase there, and then I have four additional retirees. Line one forty nine is increased need for the nursing supplies. We were a little short budgeted this year, and so we've increased that line. Our regular transportation, line one fifty two, that's a contractual increase. I believe it's two and a half percent that we budgeted. But we're not showing decimals in that percentage column, so that's why that's showing as three. Line one fifty five, um, we've seen a increased need for foster care transportation and the line above at one fifty four homeless. And so I'm increasing those budgets a little bit. But we've also have a decrease on one fifty seven of our transportation coordinator. So we had hired transfer court, transportation coordinator a year ago. We had him on staff and then Greenfield pulled him away from us. But we were able to make a deal and we are sharing him now. And so we have a savings on our transportation coordinator line. And with that, we're getting some transportation routes to out of district placements as part of our cost, our shared cost. Summer transportation, we decreased that number for the summer program based on our need last year. And then line one fifty nine, you can see that decrease. And that's based on what we expect to pay next year using our contract with the shared transportation coordinator and what our placements are. Line one sixty four is food supplies and ser- and it's food and supplies for the food service program. And in the past, I would budget sort of a lump sum, but I took Molly put in a budget for food service and it increased a bit. And it includes more than just the food, it includes all of her different supplies. And so the past couple of years, we've made, had a surplus with food service, and you might remember seeing that in the budget presentation. And so that. Have it on another screen so I can better speak to you about it.
It looks like as you're doing that, um, I'm looking here and it looks like the funds are under grants other. Um, and that's because it comes from our, uh, free and reduced lunch stuff.
Right, so food service money all must go to a food service revolving fund. And so we have grants others, not just grants, it's revolving funds as well, and food service is a big piece of that. So all the money goes into food service revolving and all the money comes out of food service revolving. And so that money result revolves from year to year. So you can have a beginning balance that'll just move into the next year. And then we can use that if we have a deficit, you know, to cover overages or to you know, improve our, our equipment to buy new equipment, to expand our program, you know, we could use it for an assortment of things. But only for food service related expenses. And then the salaries for food service, that's really just bringing in the summer staffing to the budget where it hadn't previously always been included in there. Down in the next section, we're into the tuitions. So choice and charter, you may remember me talking about how we saw a decrease this year in the current year for choice and charter. And that that's a pretty significant decrease for fiscal twenty three, the year that we're in right now. But it's a pretty significant change from fiscal twenty two, and we had no warning or indication that this was coming. So I'm carefully reducing these numbers in fiscal twenty four a little bit. But if we had a huge decrease in that enrollment in fiscal twenty three, we don't know what fiscal twenty four is gonna bring. I mean, I can hope that it's gonna continue to go down, it's gonna continue to go in that direction, but we really don't know for sure because it, it's based on a lot of people moving from one town to another. It's not just our students changing their mind about where they're going to school. If that were the case, our foundation enrollment would stay flat. But our foundation enrollment went down based on the changes of the choice and charter out numbers. When one seventy five, one seventy six, and one seventy seven, those are all our out of district tuition placements, special ed. We are budgeting for thirteen placements and we have a hundred thousand dollars in unanticipated. Now already, Diana's here, but she may be able to talk about the positions. We have a handful of students that we're thinking we may need to place them out in this current fiscal year. Decisions haven't been made yet. And so we're gonna be taking another look at this before we finalize the budget. Diane, you have anything to add to that? Oh, we can't hear you. You're, you're not muted, but we can't hear you.
I go from Google Meet to Zoom and every time I go on to Zoom, I have to stop and manually increase my, like my audio output. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Question, John?
Oh, I was, uh, so the, uh, tuition to non-public schools, that would be uh, some of our high need students who have to receive services at these, uh, entities, is, is that correct?
That is correct. Um, you know, as much as possible, we try to identify if a student's needs can be met in a collaborative or, um, a, a another, um, public school program that may be able to offer a specialty program that we don't have available. So we do have a tuition in agreement with an area of public school. And we look at tuitioning into collaborative day programs where we have membership and uh, maybe, um, they typically are considered less restrictive and a little bit more affordable. In terms of continuum of need. But the other thing that I think people are less aware of at, at the sort of community level is that we also become a fiscal partner to agencies who have custody of children who then may require placement in a setting. And so we, for some of these children, it may be that we don't even have an opportunity for, to program for them. We've been identified as a, uh, financial partner. Uh, and the child may live, um, outside of Franklin County in a program. And we are simply identified as the, um, fiscal, um, LEA or Local Educational Agency because the parent once lived or last lived in Montague or Turner's Falls or Gill in our district prior to placement in an agency. So we do have, um, a couple of very high need students who are in the care of, in custody of DCF that we are financially responsible for, who are not in our district.
Okay, so we can move on to page four. And on that page, we have custodial supplies on line one eighty three. And that's a decrease of ten thousand dollars, and that's just basically decrease of our pandemic related needs, right? We're not getting as many nap masks, we're not buying the Plexiglas. So we have a decrease there, but we do still have a little bit of funding from Esser. And then our line two oh two are maintenance salaries that if you remember, the custodial contract was approved. And so they had been a year out. And so this is, basically, it's a couple of years of increases that you're seeing as the increase, because the prior year budget would not have it would have had some of the money in the negotiable salaries in the prior year. So now none of it is in the negotiable salary line. Um, line two oh eight, contracted services for technology, so that's basically our internet.
I, I, excuse me, I, I just have a question on, uh, two oh five, and I noticed it says technician salary. And is that, how many people is that, please?
Uh, that is three people.
Three people, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna have to pull Tina's budget. I don't have answers to the two technology lines here. I don't have these answers. And Tina, Tina is, is not available today. So line two oh eight and line two eleven, I'm gonna have to get back to you on those two lines. So I didn't get to her before she left to get the details. So I will have answers for those two increases for you the next time we meet. Hopefully, but she'll still be gone. But see what I can do. On the next page, page five, two seventeen, principal salary, that's a change in staffing. So we have a new principal with a different salary there. Now line two thirty six is also tied to line two fifty five. No, no, it's not two fifty five. Slide two fifty six, so line two thirty six, teacher salaries at Gill. It's not really a decrease. What we did is we had the math interventionist. And we moved the math interventionist to a separate line, line two fifty six, you can see that. And we also had another line where we had a tutor, a reading tutor in Gill. And we moved that position out of the reading tutor line and into the teacher line. So that's offset. So it looks like a decrease, but it's really just a reallocation of a couple of lines. John?
How many teachers at Gill, please?
Oh, I don't have that number right here. Um, paraprofessionals. That's a decrease because we had, did have a pair that followed their student to the middle school. And then we already talked about the math interventionist line. And line two sixty two, that's the tutor. So we had a reading tutor and that salary has been moved up to the teacher salary lines.
I, I have a question on the math interventionist, um, uh, and is that part, was the interventionist part of bargaining unit A or, or? Okay, um, and I'm just imagining that that in, and this may not be a budgetary question, so if, if I have a question related to the academic function, should that be in a different meeting other than this one? Cause I don't wanna waste time.
Jane can answer that.
Okay.
Or Diane.
I, I, I'm thinking, you know, this math interventionist was probably a fairly substantial proportion of the teachers in Gill. And I'm wondering what their role was and how that role could possibly be continued, uh?
Right, so these are funded by Esser. We brought them in to get our math scores back to where they should be, get the students back on track after the pandemic. And we do have one math interventionist at each school now to work with the students, um, and, or the teachers. Jane, are you available to talk about this?
Sure. So yes, we added a math interventionist for each school, each elementary school, and they are working uh, to support the classroom teachers, but they're also pulling small groups of students to provide intervention similar to our reading intervention program in order to get students caught up from the pandemic.
Yeah, that, it, that seems really, really important. And as a math teacher, I always felt that reading got more support than math did, uh, and so I, I, I like to see support for math. Uh, is there any way that that functionality could be continued? Uh, I would really hope that it could and.
I think as, as part of the budget process from year to year, we knew we would have a window where we would have to look at the positions that were going to be funded by these extensive grants, were, you know, really provided us an opportunity to address, uh, learning loss with a, with a more aggressive instructional and support model. And so next year, using this year's data and data at the start of next year, we'll really have to work on making some decisions going into the FY twenty five budget, John.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and I believe Title One funding could also be used for math. It's not just for reading, is it, Jane?
No, it can be used, it can be used for math as well.
Right, and it has that times in different places.
Okay, moving on. Line two seventy six is custodial salaries. Remember we have the salary adjustments for the custodials because that was settled. Then line two seventy eight. This is not just a sixty seven percent increase. This is not just a sixty-seven percent increase for fiscal twenty-four. This is based on what our costs are this year and what they were last year. And just getting that budget back up to where we really need it to be, because we are overspending our utility lines this year. And we did overspend our utility lines last year, so. You may all notice that at home too. And then on the next page, page six, we have a few more lines, so. You'll find like line two eighty-four, you'll find the same line in all of the schools. That we have a new contract for our waste management, and so that has increased. Line two eighty-five is contract, um. Contracted services. And that is an increase, so we can construct a wall in room eight and. In Gill, along with a couple of other. Needs up there. I don't have everything on the list here. And then. Line two eighty-six is for more supplies, so we can. Increase it to be able to paint rooms up there next summer. All right, now we're gonna move on to Hillcrest. Line two ninety-five is a principal salary line. That, um, includes mentoring new principals. And then line three fourteen is the teacher salary line, which just like. At Gill, this isn't a decrease, but if you go to line three three eight, you see the math interventionist, and so that is. Um, corresponds with that one. It was just moving that math interventionist out. Pair professionals at. Gill in line, I mean at Hillcrest, line three three one. There are four students that have one-to-one IEPs. One-to-one paras on their IEPs that will be moving from Hillcrest to Sheffield, and so we're moving those paras with them. So that is seventy-two thousand. That decrease that you see there. And that is, I put it on a separate line because we're really gonna have to dig into these paras as. We get closer to. The end of the year when we know, have a better idea of which students are still there. Which students are moving, which students are not moving, and make some adjustments that way. All of our sublines, we're trying to adjust those based on the increased rates and based on. The needs that we have had lately. Right, line three forty-nine is a change in staffing, so we have a different nurse at Hillcrest than what we had when we built the budget in fiscal twenty-three. And then line three fifty is our salary for food service. And. Sure. We're not hearing you very good. It sounds like you're swimming.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, right now.
Um. I'm curious why the percentage increase is different between the Gill food service and the Hillcrest. Food service. Looks like a seven percent and a thirteen percent, and it's, isn't that the same contract?
It is the same contract, but some. That, uh, people can be placed in different places within the contract.
Like steps or whatever. Thank you.
Yep, and Hillcrest has two people working. And Gill has one person working. In the building and so, you know, based on that as well, right, so. We couldn't be looking at one step or two steps or, you know, one person getting a step or two people getting a step. Plus the increase. Or maybe nobody's getting a step because they're at the top of the scale. So. John?
Uh, how are nurses distributed? Is that a full-time or a half-time or?
Full-time.
Full-time, so does.
School has a full-time nurse.
Okay, see, this is why it's the promised land. I, I'm just telling you, we, uh, one time my thirty thousand district had two nurses. So.
Be, right along. Of our maintenance. Lines for Hillcrest. Uh, line three fifty-five is our heating oil. Again, the cost of heating oil. Three fifty-eight is our water and sewer. And you'll see that same type of increase, you know, a. An increase of sorts for water and sewer for Hillcrest, Sheffield and the high school.
Can I ask you a question about the waste management?
Sure.
Um, was that? I mean, it seems like a significant increase, so was it that the, the service we used no longer was. Sufficient, and so you just had to get a whole nother service with a new contract? Or was it like the end of a three-year? Or, I guess that's the contract.
We've been having some issues with our contracts. And so we needed to go out to bid and look for something different. And some of the pricing was a little strange. In our last contract, but we may get to the high school and see that it's really not much of an increase. Right, because they were overcharging on some schools and undercharging on others.
I see, gotcha.
And, you know, we also looked at. You know, what do we have for? For our pickups, how many pickups a week? How many dumpsters do we have in each place? And so all of that was looked at when we were. Going through that bit.
Thank you.
Uh, we also in line three sixty-three have more painting and carpets. And we can move on to the high school. So line three eighty-two and three eighty-four, those are tutors, and so I put those into district-wide. And as we write grants, we'll determine how much more we may need in our tutor lines. Because, you know, we estimate our grants now, but it's not until. June, July, or even August that the grants are out there and we're able to apply for them. And we know what our allocations are. So until then, we're just estimating our grants. Um, line three ninety-seven. High school would like to overhaul. Their musical instruments. John?
What is praise? I, I, I see this line, it says special ed praise supplies?
Yep, it's, um, like a rewards.
Oh, okay.
For students.
Okay, so motivators then of some kind.
Yeah, motivators, yep. Um. Line four oh nine, we added a theater staffing position. But we also, the position is split like theater teacher and also the job coach. So that's a combined position, so you'll see. The job coach line will be reduced if we get a little farther along. Line four thirteen is just a staffing change that led to a reduction. Along with four nineteen. So line four twenty-four, where you see the reduction of the justice center. And. Line four twenty-five is where we have the adjustment for the job coach.
Um, can I ask a little bit about that, the adjustment for the? High school justice center?
Yep.
Do we just not have one now?
Right, we have not had that position. Brian, do you want to talk about that? You're, you're muted.
Yeah.
Funds in fiscal twenty-three to pay for a different position.
Yeah, and we haven't been able to staff the position. We've kept it posted and for more than two years now, we've not been able to adequately staff the position. And so, um. You know, having, having two deans with the popular size of the population that we have in the bulk of. Uh, the challenges that we see at the secondary level. Really require the focus of our resources on the middle school RBR as opposed, it was, uh, the high school. Justice Center was also, uh, very underutilized. And so continuing to staff the position. Given the, the, the data. That indicated, uh, really a lack of need along with, uh, our inability to fill the position. Brought us to the conclusion that we should just remove it from the budget and, and look at reallocating resources where they're needed.
Sure, um, so just kind of following those lines, thinking about. The high school teachers, um, where did the, the students go down to the office then, when they're sent out of the classroom?
Yeah, uh, or a dean. Or a, uh, an administrator may come to see the student and try to work them back into classroom.
Has that kind of been sufficient for the needs this past year?
It has currently because again, nine through twelve, we see a much lower level of dysregulation and, um. You know, the therapeutic program at the high school is functioning very well. And I think it, a lot of it really has to do more with the, um. The maturity level and, and the relationships that the students have with, um, with the high school staff.
Absolutely, thank you.
I have a quick, quick question about, um. I think it's more of a process question.
Okay.
It's mostly, uh, I. For all the schools, there's the supply, um. You know, art supplies, well, music supplies are getting new. Uh, but, so if I'm a. A teacher in a specialized field or a teacher, a science teacher even, if I, is it just like I would expect that the budget doesn't go up and I just. Or, or is there a process by which I might ask for more? I'm just curious, like, how does someone ask for, for more? Or.
Yeah.
Um, in that, for that matter.
Brian, do you want to talk about how the, the principals process of building their budgets? In the school?
So, uh, at the secondary level, they're able to go to department meetings. Uh, early on in the school year, really beginning around the end of September and then in through October to talk about. Budget planning and people have the opportunity to provide input on, uh, you know, are we doing? A textbook review in, in the art courses, for example, or in the music courses, are they looking at doing something different? And a, as a result of that, are they proposing? Uh, an increase or a decrease or a change perhaps in the two lines that they might have. Um, from year to year, so they have an opportunity to weigh in. With the principal directly and then the principals subsequently submit their budget to, uh, Joanna and I.
Awesome, thanks.
Right, the, there's another sub-line on four twenty-seven. Right, we have increased need, we have increased cost rate changes. On page ten. So we're still the high school line four forty-eight is an adjustment counselor, so that was just a staffing change. And then line four fifty-four, that's the psychologist, the other psychologist we talked about. And so that is budgeting for a psychologist. That we have yet to hire. If we're unable to hire the psychologist, then we will move these funds to a contracted services line and we'll be able to hire. Consultants to come in to do some of the testing, some psychologists. Line four fifty-seven, the nurse salary, that's just a staffing change again. A nurse is a little higher. In a higher level than the prior nurse had been. Line four sixty-one is the salaries for food service. At the high school level, and so that's just a contractual obligation again. With no changes in that staffing. Athletic coaches, that's really just adjusting based on what our costs have been. And what the needs are anticipated. To be. So our budget was a little high in the past year. Same with transportation. And then other expenses line four sixty-six. That's just an adjustment in what the costs are for the officials. Line four seventy-seven is contractual, that's a custodial line. At the high school. And then we have the gas increase on four eighty-one. So far, gas has not seemed to fluctuate as much as the oil. But. And from what I'm seeing here. But only time will tell. Um, the rubbish removal, there you see the high school decrease on line four eighty-eight. So the high school is maybe being a little overcharged and some of the other ones undercharged, and so that's where you see a little. You know, some of those increase seem pretty high, but now you have a decrease of twenty-nine percent, so. And. Line four eighty-nine, we're. Hoping to do card access and some blue lights. At the high school. We need some pool system. Upgrades and then. An evaluation of the pool, line four ninety. Four ninety-one, they would like picnic tables at the high school, so we'll replace some of the picnic tables that we have up there. And then security monitoring increase. On the next page, page eleven is the building project interest. So every year we see a decrease in the amount of interest that we pay for the debt, and we probably have. About four years left on this debt, I believe, we're, we're coming near the end. Yep, fiscal twenty-six. Is when it will end. Right, page twelve, this is the middle school. So in line fourteen, that's just a reallocation of how we're paying for our copiers. School and high school, we didn't talk about that on the previous page, but that's where we would see. The reallocation. Just trying to not charge too many of the copiers. There's really no, no clean dividing line between the middle and the high school, and so. Copiers are used by both, so we try to split that cost.
I have a, was probably a stupid question, but we, we did Gill and then we did Hillcrest and then. We did the high school. Did, is Sheffield with Hillcrest? I like looked through it, I didn't see the pages, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I think they're alphabetical. I. I need to rearrange them and put them in a different order, but it's. Not as simple as it sounds.
Cool.
Because of all the, the links in there, so. So they're alphabetical. That's what we got. All right. Line five fifteen are online licenses at the high school. You remember, we, we had a decrease in the district wide, and so here you see some of the increase for the middle school. For a CMP math curriculum. Online license. And then line five twenty-one is a reduction in tutors. So that is in the district wide, so sometimes we're moving things to district wide because of. How we need to track it and other times we're moving things away from district wide. So it's just a matter of, of. You know, sometimes we'll run into issues with things being budgeted in a certain way and how they're being spent in a certain way, and we try to. Reverse them and see if it works out a little bit better. Uh, line five forty-four is just the staffing adjustment, medical therapeutic assistant. So that would be unit C, John. And then five forty-seven. Is a replacement equipment. So there's been no spending historically from that line for the last several years, so we're removing that budget. If we need something, we're gonna buy it in fiscal twenty-three when we still have a budget for it. So. Um. Line five forty-eight is our substitute line, just to increase in that a little bit. Line five fifty is just staffing adjustments for the middle school paras. And then line five fifty-one is increased staffing of special ed pair professionals at the middle school. We've seen an increased need this, this year, and so that's an increase in the budget. It's also an increase we're managing within our fiscal twenty-three budget. And then five forty, five fifty-four is just our para sub-line increase as well. Five seventy-four is a staffing adjustment. Just different person than what was budgeted in fiscal. Twenty-three. And five eighty-one, same thing. The nurse salary is an increase, not because it's a big increase, but because it's a change in staffing. And then we move on to Sheffield. It was the last.
Apologies, Joanne, I, I like tried to flip through and I didn't see it. Totally, sorry.
That's okay. Um. So teacher salary, six thirty-one. Again, this is the same thing that we saw with the math interventionist, so you can see. That adjustment from six fifty-seven. And six thirty-one, right, they about offset each other. and six thirty-one, right, they about offset each other. Six forty-five is our teacher's sub-line increase. Six forty-eight, those are the four paraprofessionals that are following students from Hillcrest. So I put those on their own individual line.
John?
Yeah, I, so, uh, when, is the math intervention specialist, they were selected from the regular teachers? Is that, they, or do they represent an actual, uh, per, uh, uh, additional personnel?
In either, yeah, in either, either way, John, uh, there were two that were drawn from existing faculty, so we had to backfill their classroom positions.
I see, I see, I see, but they rep, they do represent additional personnel that will be missing after twenty-four, I guess, is that correct?
Potentially, we have to do an analysis of that, but we, you know, we want to keep it in place for the final year of this three-year, uh, long-term recovery plan.
Thank, thank you.
All right, so six forty-eight is the four paras that are coming from Hillcrest, and then six forty-nine is, it shows our paras that had an increase in fiscal twenty-three. So we had an increased need, and so we have additional paras there. And then six fifty-three is our subs. Six sixty-two, this was for online site licenses based on historical costs, this is all they need at Sheffield. There are some software that Tina has district-wide, so these items that are online textbooks for the individual schools are really things that are only used at those specific schools, and that's why they're budgeted in that way. Line six sixty-six is a request for six document cameras at Sheffield, and so that's an increase in technology. And then line six seventy is a change in staffing of an adjustment counselor at Sheffield. Six seventy-four is just the staffing change in the nurse position as well. And then six seventy-five is our food service positions where the contract was approved, and so now we're building that into the budget. Last page, line six eighty is our gas heat. And then six eighty-one is oil heat, so I'm trying to adjust that, so we're spending, so we're using more oil than we are gas. I mean, we, we have been using more oil than gas, and I want to reverse it. Use more gas, because I think that we could see more of a savings that way, so this is the school that has dual fuel and it, they just don't always flip over from one to the other as easy as they're supposed to. So we've been working on getting that adjustment made. And let's say six eighty-four is our water sewer line. The cost of increase there, and if any of you live in town, you'll see the increase in the sewer costs as well. So we have the same type of rates. Line six eighty-seven is our trash removal. Six eighty-eight is an increase in our contractual services, contract services for maintenance, so we can do things that were included in the building assessment, blue lights, increased radios.
Could I ask, what are the blue lights, please?
Blue lights would be if we have a lockdown and there's a blue light outside that would alert people so they wouldn't enter the building during a lockdown.
Okay, thank you.
Um, funds for Sheffield, and when we talk about Sheffield, we're also including the admin building, and that would be added money to paying admin floors is one of those items. Right, so that is sort of the line-by-line major change lines that we wanted to just talk about, but certainly isn't an overall discussion about all of the budget lines, so if anyone has any other questions about lines that they would like some answers on, I can do my best to answer those.
I have what is probably a, a process question, um. Being on the finance committee, usually when we see the budgets, we see like three years, like what it was, what was used, what was left, you know, like, and that either, it supports the increase or the decrease or whatever, I know that that is in our ear, but I was just curious, do we assume that, um, like, at the end of the year, that, um, is there a way to see what we used or didn't use for the previous year, is that online from last year?
Right, so fiscal twenty-two. You know, when I give, I give reports to school committee, that would be the expenditure report that has every single line in it, and then I summarize that into an operating statement that puts all of the instructional lines together, all of the um, administrative lines together, all the custodial lines together. And that sort of summarizes that for you, and so I'm gonna have that at your next meeting, an update of that. But that's for fiscal twenty-three. So fiscal twenty-three, we're still working on, right, we're still, we're still spending that money.
Sure, sure.
So if we go back to our historical budget, that would be fiscal twenty-two, so when I give budgets to the principals, I give them their budget and their spending for fiscal, I think I went back to fiscal nineteen, fiscal twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two, and then their fiscal twenty-three budget. And when we look at that, you know, it's, they don't have as much of the other information here, they don't have the circuit breaker, school choice, they don't have all those budget lines, but they have a bunch of historical budget lines, so I give them that to look at the history. So that way, when they're building their budget for fiscal twenty-four, they are looking well, like that therapeutic equipment line. I had fifty-one thou, fifty-one hundred dollar budget every year for the past four years, and so far I've spent nothing in the past four years. Do I need the fifty-one hundred again in fiscal twenty-four? Or do I not? And that's when we look at that stuff, but if I gave you all that as well as all of these?
No, I, yeah, I'm, I'm more just trying to wrap my head around some stuff, so the, um, if you don't spend it, it goes it, into the general fund or if it's an S or fund-related thing, it would go into that, it would go into the rel, relevant fund.
Would go into the relevant fund, and maybe we don't spend the fifty-one hundred on that piece of equipment, but maybe our, our out-of-district tuition was way overspent, right, and so we have a deficit there, we have a deficit in our heat and utility lines, you know, so the whole budget in the end balances or we end with a surplus, because we won't end with a deficit, but.
And the surplus just sits somewhere in a bank getting interest or something like that?
That goes into our, at the end of each year, just like a town has free cash.
Yep, yep.
We have what's called E and D, access and deficiency.
Ah, okay, yes.
Right, and so the surpluses would roll up and go to E and D. And so this year, our E and D was certified at one point one million. Right, and our cap is five percent, and so that was, that was pretty close to the cap, so in fiscal twenty-four in the budget, we're using more E and D money to fund this budget, so that way we don't risk blowing that cap.
Mention the, uh, mention if you go over five percent, what happens to that money, it gets returned, right?
It gets returned to the towns. And it could get returned in the form of reduced assessments in a prior year. But, you know, we'd rather keep it here and have it to spend ourselves than give it back to the towns. So we do try to build the budget, use the amount that we need from E and D, have the, any surplus we have roll into E and D and just continue on our way that way, so we do try not to. The first year I came here, the, the budget had ended up with a surplus, money had went into E and D and it did end with a surplus higher than the cap, and so money did go back to the towns, a couple hundred thousand dollars. So that was my first year. That's what I got here too. E and D had just been certified and I had to give the money back.
And another way we account for money that wasn't needed in one area and isn't another is the budget transfers that we do often. Um, we see that, you will see that there's something somebody needs and someone else hasn't needed, so we can transfer it among uh, different light items, and we have to approve it if it is more than a certain amount and more than particularly.
You prove it if it's going between different categories.
Right.
Right, and then you also get the list each month.
Yep.
Each month I give you a list, these are the transfers we've made, so from when you approve the budget, so when you approve the budget, if you look back at the, let me just pull this back up again. When you approve this budget, I'm just gonna go to a different sheet here. Okay, so when you approve the budget, you are going to see, I don't know if you can see this highlighted or not.
Yep.
I don't know if it shaded, anything got shaded?
Yes, it does, yep.
Okay, so this is what you would be approving in the budget, line four is the one thousand, so that is the administrative line, so you would approve seven hundred and ten, three fifty-six. And anything that we take out of that seven, ten, three fifty-six, you approve for us to move to a different line. But any transfers that are within that seven, ten, three fifty-six, anything that goes from a one thousand line to another one thousand line, you would not have to approve, you would just be informed of that. So when I go back to the budget worksheet, if we look at this section here where I'm highlighting now, these are all in the one thousand line, and this is the, the total is the seven and ten here, so anything that transfers within any of these lines, we don't bring it to you for approval. We just bring it to you to inform you.
Um, can I ask what those codes are for those lines again? You had them up just a second ago.
Sure, yep. So administration is one thousand. Excuse me?
Sorry, I was saying if you just leave it up for a second, I got it, thank you.
And these are, um, Department of Education, these are their categories. And so when you approve the budget, this is what you have, and we approve it based on these categories. It makes it easier for doing transfers where we can transfer within the two thousand lines, and it's really not that often that we're transferring outside of those lines, we do try to stick within within those sections. Once the contracts are settled, all the negotiable salaries that we have sitting in the five thousand lines will get moved to the lines where they belong, which are primarily two thousands.
Jean, how universal are these codes? So for example, administration here is a thousand, now I know in California, teacher salary on the budget was object code eleven hundred. Is this a different system here in Massachusetts?
I think every state has their own system, yes.
Okay, now in California, there was a thing called the California School Accounting Manual that would tell you what line item, uh, what, what could be included within each o, object code designation, does Massachusetts have a similar?
Yes.
Let's see, uh, what's the name of that manual, and is it available online?
I can, I can send out a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Are we all set with that?
Yes, thank you very much.
Brooke, are you, did you get what you needed?
I did, thank you, I realize you can't see my individual face when there's so many faces.
Right. All I could see was my screen. So. All right, is there any other questions?
If people think of something later, they certainly can check in with you.
I was gonna say, definitely well later, but thank you so much, Joanne, you really laid this out so nicely, um, so that we can really look at it, so thank you so much for all your hard work on this.
You're welcome, thank you.
Definitely.
So at the next meeting, we'll, we'll probably include the budget presentation, the, the large, um, PowerPoint presentation in your packet, and so we just have another copy of that, so we'll be talking about the budget again, and you'll vote the preliminary budget.
Yes.
And at the future meetings, we're probably gonna bring to you some, um, changes that we are contemplating, added positions or reduced positions, because we need to be ready if we have different amount of funding than what we budgeted for, right, so we could have four hundred thousand dollars less, we could have four hundred thousand dollars more. We need to know what we're gonna do with those funds, so at future meetings, we'll start putting together lists, and if you have ideas on what you would like to put into that budget, we can talk about that and really create that list so we have it by the time the budget comes out in March. And then we're gonna have to sort of rate, you know, what comes first, right, what if we get one hundred thousand, we have a four hundred thousand dollar list, we're gonna have to rank everything and decide how we're gonna change that budget. And, you know, as, as the year goes on, I've, we've already had two positions changed since this budget was built, so I will get those into the budget after you vote, and that'll be our first change, right, we'll just start making the changes right to the budget. So that way, when we get to March, you know, I'm, I'm sure we won't have saved four hundred thousand dollars with changes in position, but, you know, hopefully we've saved something.
When you approve the preliminary budget, does that set a limit as to what the budget can be adjusted in the future, or can the budget be increased?
I don't think that sets a limit, but we're gonna have to double-check that. I think the next time we vote, in March, when you vote, that sets a limit for sure.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else have anything at the moment?
Uh, Jane, I'm wondering, can we meet between now and next Tuesday, uh, just to, I just have some questions on the budget clarifications, and maybe you can help me separate unit A, unit C, unit D.
Yeah, I, I can, I can meet with you.
Oh, I, I, okay, uh, what, what, why don't you just email me, uh, my schedule's pretty flexible, so whenever's convenient for you between now and next Friday would be, uh, next Tuesday would be great.
Yeah, really, you know, maybe Friday would be a good day.
Okay, okay, okay.
So, uh, we could do this remotely?
I, I can, I, I can drop by, um, how about what, what's a good, I have one meeting from like one till two.
John, why don't we, why don't we, uh, why don't we arrange offline?
Okay.
So that, uh, we'll just do an email exchange? Perfect.
That sounds good, anyone else have anything else before we finish up? Thank you again, Joanne, that's a lot of useful information, thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, we just need to remind people the next scheduled meetings, January twenty-fourth is our regular business meeting. Um, and on February fourteenth, it will be, um, a regular meeting whi, which will include the public hearing on the preliminary budget that we will have voted. So that is open to the public and it's posted as such, it'll be posted in the newspapers as well. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that.
Thank you, Jennifer. And did I hear Nick? Thank you, Nick, second, any discussion? You're right, we'll take a roll call vote, Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Jean and Diane for joining us as well. Thanks again, Jean, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, have a good night.
Thank you, you too, and thanks, Joanne, we'll talk soon, as usual.